All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's nine oh five a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mihia, Commissioner Gary Edwards on Zoom, Commissioner Emily Claus to my left. County Manager is excused today, and we have Assistant County Managers in force, Robin Campbell, Rob Gilder, and Josh Cummings. So we have a three-hour work session. It's going to have, just for public introduction, we have a live stream on the YouTube channel. There's a closed session toward the end where we will be off the live stream. We're going to be handling a variety of different matters this morning. We probably take a ten-minute recess midway through because it's looking like this probably will be a three-hour session. So we'll start out with item one, which is to consider rescheduling a public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty capital improvement program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. There are two proposed actions before you today to reschedule public hearings that have recently been set. On October twenty-ninth, the Board took action to set a public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty CIP, and on November fifth, took action to set a public hearing for the water and sewer general facilities charges. Late last week, the December budget public hearing schedule was finalized and included changes to both of those public hearings, dates and times. So this act, these actions are just to ratify the reschedules of those. So unless you have further questions, I'd ask you to make a formal motion to reschedule both of these formal, both of these public hearings.
Questions for Amy on what items one and two are about? Hearing none? Oh, Commissioner, I worked. Go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna say I had no question.
Okay. Vice Chair Fornier or any other Commissioner would like to make a motion?
Sorry. What was that?
Would you like to make a motion on item one?
Yes, I moved for the public hearing.
Yep.
I moved to reschedule public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty CIP, to schedule a public hearing, um, December second, two thousand and twenty-four at three thirty p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Claus first, so then we've got any discussion on this? Hearing done. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I heard them all. Passes unanimously. Let's go to item two. Is there a motion there?
Some.
Second.
Okay, a motion then regarding item two, which is to reschedule the public hearing regarding sewer and water fees for also December second. This one's at two forty-five. Discussion on that motion? Vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is that everybody? Yep. Okay, thank you. That match misses. So that's one and two. Got our public hearings reset. Let's go to item three, countywide planning policy update or discussion. And we have CPED team. Good morning.
We'll be waiting for our presentation to come up. Just want to say good morning. This is a continued conversation. I know we have been trying to keep you informed about the proposed countywide planning policy updates, especially as they pertain to the new urban growth area swap provisions that the state passed post of two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-four.
Real quick. Commissioners, can you hear Ashley online?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can hear.
Um, I can talk a little louder, too. Um, so let's see here. Thank you. Um, so for today's briefing, we're going to cover a little bit of background, make sure everyone's on the same page, and I'm going to walk through what the countywide planning policy update proposals are, and then have a discussion with the board about next steps. So here's just an overview of the process for countywide planning policy updates. This is not something that the board touches often. The last time the countywide planning policies were updated was in two thousand and fifteen. For context, countywide planning policies really provide the regional policy framework for how we work with our jurisdictions on planning-related issues. So in this case, the updates, the process being followed is there were new state law. In general, there's usually a planning director consultation, and as we'll go through with this one, it usually happens before action gets taken by the urban growth management subcommittee, but not always. So planning directors consult. They bring proposals to the urban growth management subcommittee, and that is a body that is composed of elected officials from all the different jurisdictions in Thurston County, and the meetings of that body are hosted by Thurston Regional Planning Council. Once that body makes a recommendation, then it comes to the Board of County Commissioners, who usually hold a work session or multiple work sessions to consider those recommendations, followed by a public hearing with our Board of County Commissioners, and then final action by our Board of County Commissioners. Any questions about that process before I move on, since it is something that the Board hasn't seen most likely?
So I have a question. So, um, the proposals that come to the UGM Subcommittee, sometimes it's just to expand a UGA proposal, right? And that wouldn't necessarily trigger a need to go through a process for changing countywide planning policies.
That is correct.
So, so this is only in the instance where there needs to be a change in countywide planning policy?
This, this, um, with the exception of the planning director consultation, the rest of the process still stands for, so for even for an urban growth area expansion, rather than a planning director consultation, you have planning commissions making recommendations. You can just sort of swap that out.
Okay. Yeah, that was kind of my point, is like, they're really similar.
Yep.
We're talking about technically two different, they could be different. They're different processes because we've had ones come through this board that didn't require touching the countywide planning policies.
That is true. The urban growth area changes, the policies for how to go about those are baked into the countywide planning policies. And so when the UGM Subcommittee is considering those, they just refer to this regional policy framework and say, oh, this is what we should be considering. And same with the planning commission and the board. In this case, the changes are actually to that regional policy framework. So they would change how that subcommittee looks at future changes to urban growth areas.
You're probably, you may get to this, but it's like, in this case, there was, when the state law changed, there was some question as to whether or not there was a need to change countywide planning policies, whether or not there was a conflict or a gap. And then, I don't know if that ever got totally resolved, but in an abundance of caution, we're going through this process. Is that, is that right?
Yes, and we, we can touch on that a little bit when we get to the urban growth area swap policy updates.
That, that conversation happened during the green bubble area, would you say?
That one.
So that, whether or not we should move forward and how we move forward, that was during the planning director consultation. So you're remembering correctly. All right.
Ready to go forward?
So the topic that hasn't been talked a lot about by this board, but has been talked a lot about by the planning directors over the last year and a half, as well as the urban growth subcommittee, are the tribal participation policy proposals. So we, the state actually adopted provisions in two thousand and twenty-two stating that tribes should be participating in the countywide planning policy updates, urban growth management subcommittee meetings. And so there has been a lot of work over the last year and a half, working with the tribes in this region to draft language to ensure that they have opportunities to participate in these larger regional planning decisions. And so in August of this year, the urban growth management subcommittee did recommend updates for tribal participation. At a high level, they are including confederated tribes of Shale's Reservation and Medicine Creek Treaty Tribes, which includes Nisqually, Pual, and Squaxen tribes. There are new policies being proposed that emphasize collaboration and representation on the urban growth management subcommittee. And there were also some new references to fish habitat and fish passage for environmental quality protections in sections of the countywide planning policies that do refer to those environmental quality protections. Any questions on the tribal piece? That one is a little bit more straightforward, and there has been a lot of regional discussion and buy-off by the tribes on those items.
I can say at the UGM Subcommittee level, we didn't really have, it didn't seem to me that anything was really being proposed beyond what kind of the law required. I mean, there's nothing sort of going out on some crazy limb. It seemed like we were pretty much trying to track the requirements of the new law. And there didn't seem to be, there wasn't much argument or debate about any disputed points that I remember.
I, I don't think there were. And in the spirit of collaboration, Thurston Regional Planning Council has been inviting the tribes to the last, at least that I know, the last three urban growth management subcommittee meetings. So the next one that you have heard a little bit more about, because we have a docket item that includes this. So in spring of two thousand and twenty-two, the state created new urban growth areas, and a new tool for urban growth area swaps for comprehensive planning reviews. And essentially what that said is, instead of just taking land out of the UGA or just putting land into the UGA, jurisdictions could opt to swap land in and out as part of one proposal. In spring two thousand and twenty-four, the state created a second UGA swap tool. We're still trying to figure out if that was the intention, but as it's written, it exists in different sections of the RCWs for annual comprehensive plan updates. So same tool, but on a different timeline and with slightly different provisions. In August of this year, the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee recommended updates to reference this new legislation. And the important piece that was missing from that recommendation was that green bubble, the planning director consultation. So the recommendation that came out of the UGM Subcommittee meeting wasn't made in response to a planning director recommendation. It was a motion that was put on the floor by a member of the UGM Subcommittee. And that's important to know because the next day, you all, the board, directed us to consult with the regional planning directors. Basically, go back and make sure that that green bubble, that step, didn't get passed over before we moved into this work session and follow-up hearings. So between August twentieth and today, we have worked with the regional planning directors. We've had two regional meetings and have drafted refinements to the recommendation that was made by the UGM Subcommittee. This is wordy. I don't expect you to read every word up there on the slide, but I wanted to make sure it was available for folks listening into the work session. So the UGM Subcommittee recommendation, it passed five to two. You may recall, Tomwater and Alentia did provide a minority opinion expressing concerns about the lack of collaboration, basically the lack of planning director consultation prior to being asked to make a decision. And, and what got passed was basically just references. So adding new policies to the countywide planning policies, but those policies are essentially just a reference to state law. That is what got passed, and what the planning directors use as our basis for review. Next slide. And so what I wanted to spend some time today talking about was the refinements that the planning directors are suggesting that the board consider as these updates move through the process and in particular move to a hearing. I'd say the, the biggest, biggest idea that came out of the meetings with planning directors was this notion of establishing an interlocal agreement before processing a UGA swap. If you think about the Lacy annexation that you just made a decision on, be kind of similar to that. There is a recognition from the planning directors that these, these proposals are going to impact, with the exception of Grand Mound, they're going to impact multiple jurisdictions. So even with the one that's on our docket right now, it impacts both the county and Tomwater. And so the planning directors thought it would be helpful if at the outset, there's an interlocal agreement that identifies the roles and responsibilities of the respective jurisdictions, establishes review process and timelines as a service to the community. So they have a clear understanding of what their role is and the opportunities for engagement, figuring out what public noticing looks like, what the land use and zoning are going to look like, especially as it's a city or the receiving jurisdiction, talking through utility provisions, as well as potential revenue sharing. This isn't necessarily a comprehensive list. I think it was more the, the intention to sit down and talk through this, have the jurisdictions talk through what this would look like before moving forward with the proposal. And then in addition to that, the planning directors recommended pulling in some language that's already in the countywide planning policy updates for either expansion or expansion or retraction of the UGA, in particular, the provision of cost-effective sewer, water, and transportation services. It's an area that isn't, isn't referenced in state law, but is really important for cities as they think about new land coming in that they didn't plan on having within their UGA boundary. They want to, they want to make sure they're, we're looking at that cost-effective component, not just is it available, but is it cost-effective to serve and does it make sense to serve in that particular location? Other things that were discussed were really around the proposed rulemaking that the state is working on now for the two thousand and twenty-two UGA swap updates, which are trying to expand on new terms that they put in state law, like patterns of development is probably the one that they're spending the most time on rulemaking on. UGA swap policies speak to, oh, basically having patterns of development determine whether some land should be brought in or some land should be taken out. Well, patterns of development isn't currently defined in state law. And we have, we have sent questions on to the Department of Commerce and MRSC saying, hey, how, how should we interpret this? What kind of analysis are you going to need, state, to ensure that we're meeting these requirements? So planning directors spent a bit of time talking about that. There are references to that in those updates that came out of our discussions. So I'm happy to answer questions.
No questions for me. So under two point six A, which I think is what you were just referring to, which is the attempt to speak to patterns of development prong. I, so there's sub one, sub two. The review and evaluation program referenced in countywide planning policy eleven-one, buildable lands program, and either a joint plan or sub-area plan adopted by the affected city or town and county. Or, sub two is other analysis approved jointly by affected jurisdictions, as reflected in the interlocal agreement. So I kind of read two things into that. One is, is trying to give some, is this just kind of like our local attempt to give a little more definition to what would satisfy this prong statute?
We're trying to leave space for the, the rulemaking, recognizing that if we have a proposal right now, moving forward, and the rulemaking doesn't get adopted, that we could jointly decide on some kind of analysis that would meet those requirements.
Okay, but you're, okay, but you're actually anticipating that there'll be state rulemaking that will supersede this?
That will provide some guidance. It's probably not going to provide, you know, the specifics. And so I think this will still stand even when the rulemaking gets adopted, that the jurisdictions that are affected might still have more specific requirements around the analysis.
Well, so it didn't seem to me like it was making it more, or like, the way this is drafted, didn't seem like it was substantively making it more or less onerous. It just was trying to lay out what would be the approved, sort of the burden or the, the level of proof required to show whatever that standard is.
Yes.
That's still not defined. Am I making myself clear? Like about what?
I just ruined your ear. Sorry. I'll get that later.
The question is, what kind of pattern of development is going to create pressure that's going to, you know, exceed amount of available, developable lands? I mean, there's some, there's some logical, obvious way to look at that, but I'm sure there will be ambiguities and gray areas, and you're already anticipating that, and make sure the state is too. So, so, so on one hand, I'm just trying to confirm my reading of this, which is that it's not saying, it's not taking a restrictive or a permissive view as to what patterns of development, what that means. It's just saying, here's the evidence that you'll need to rely on to make that decision. Is that?
The intention was for clarity.
Okay.
Both for our applicants, what are the expectations of a potential applicant that wants to, to do this, or jurisdiction that wants to do this, as well as for the public, our planning commission and policymakers, clarity around those expectations. So, yeah, the intention wasn't to make it more onerous than this, the state might make it. It's to make it more clear.
Okay. And then the other piece I read in this is just that, um, like, so I wasn't sure what was going to, you know, result from this consultation, because I had heard that some jurisdictions had, have, have made it more onerous. Like, they've gone beyond. They've said, okay, but state law allows this many UGA swaps, but we're not comfortable with all that. We're going to only allow this many. That's what I'd heard. I haven't studied those. I think Snohomish was the one I heard about and maybe another. So I wasn't sure if we'd see something like that. When I read this, I don't see that. What I, but what I do see is that the municipality would essentially get to veto the, the proposal, which, you know, isn't necessarily, it might be more permissive than the county, or they might be, I mean, that's not saying how it would come out substantively, but just from a process standpoint, it sounds like what we're saying here is that if there isn't joint agreement, and again, I don't, I probably would never agree. You know, I think informally, that's kind of implicit, right? Like, I don't think I would personally, as a commissioner, vote for a UGA swap that a city was opposing. That would make very little sense to me. But it's, but it seems like this is building in a kind of a formal veto that may not occur, that may not exist. Is that, is that true about this, these changes? Like, we couldn't go forward. We disagree with Tomwater, let's say. And then if they don't agree, it's done because this would not be satisfied.
The, um, the board makes final decisions on things like UGA boundary expansions and retractions. So yes, ultimately, the board gets to make the decision. I think the jurisdictions are concerned that the, the county could act unilaterally to add land, take land out without their input and without assurances that there's going to be this cost-effective provision of sewer, water, transportation.
Commissioner, will you reference the part that Chair King in on, so all Commissioners can read that same language?
Yeah, I'm on the same provision there. This is under the, I don't know what page it is in the packet, but it's the countywide planning policy update.
Very last.
Two point six.
Of two point six.
Yeah, the very last page of the thing. And I'm looking at two point six A. So that looks like it's just out of state law. County or city determined patterns of development and created pressure for development that exceed amount of available land. And then what seems like the add is through any of the following means. And then there's two things in there, which I think is something that's new.
And the reason that we didn't want to just stick with the first one, which references buildable lands is our, buildable lands, like right now, we're working off on with data from two thousand and nineteen. Lots happened in five years. So we did want to make sure that there was an alternative there. So if the jurisdictions in this region decided to entertain a UGA swap, they wouldn't have to do a full-blown update to the buildable lands inventory before moving forward.
So I'm just thinking about those two requirements, review and evaluation, either and, either a joint plan adopted by the affected city and county. So that would require city concurrence, obviously.
Well, it's, it's the same. Well, it's the same. They make a recommendation to the board. So the board still makes a final decision on a joint plan, but it's based on joint planning commission recommendation, a city council recommendation. And so it's very similar to what a UGA swap would look like.
In other words, we don't have to be a rubber stamp for anybody. We don't have our own say as the joint plan.
Okay, but if we did that, then there would be, then someone could say, well, you violated countywide planning policy. That wouldn't necessarily take away our decision-making, but it would be a matter of litigation potentially. I'm just trying to, I'm not being, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we, because I didn't, like I say, I could see this going several different directions. This doesn't, you know, like I think I'm trying to outline for my seatmates, like I don't think this really goes to anything restrictive or otherwise regarding the substantive provisions. It's more of a process.
We focused on process. I think every planning director around the table recognized that this is a new tool that might be very useful for the jurisdictions as we look into the future. So what kind of process should this region have in place to use this new tool? It's kinda like the instruction manual. You got a new tool. We were trying to write an instruction manual about how that tool gets used and make sure those instructions are clear and that the expectations are clear for the jurisdictions, our community, and obviously landowners that might be affected by it.
And those instruction manual that they've written in collaboration is built in collaboration leading up to the board's final decision.
Yeah, and again, that's why I think the ILA makes a lot of sense, because that's about collaboration. What I was keying on, just to finish the thought, is subsection 2, other analysis approved jointly. So that's where I was kinda like, okay, well, if they don't, you know, if the city and county don't agree on this patterns of development question, you know, we don't have joint approval on the analysis that supports the county's position versus where the city's at, then, you know, then this would not be able to go forward, because we don't have that joint approval.
And under joint planning, the way it's written right now, the cities are really on the hook for most of the UGA analysis that's done. Like, as we're going through our comprehensive plan updates, we're looking to the cities to analyze their UGAs and recommend changes to those UGAs. Not every county operates like that, but that's how ours does under joint planning. So I think this just helps memorialize that we're already doing joint planning, and we probably would not be telling our cities how to analyze their UGAs and identify changes in patterns of development.
I mean, I guess it's an option, you know, and it could prevent one portion of a potential benefit to the whole community from being an obstructionist. I guess that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. My concern is here, is if we set this hearing for January, I'm sure you mean January of 2025, right? Is that adequate timing for parties involved? Does that meet what's kinda going on right now with, I mean, there's a a project being proposed. Does this dimey them if we wait until January to set this hearing? Would it be better if we set the hearing in December?
I don't think with noticing requirements, we could pull off December at this point.
So what's the timing of the bar holdings application?
Bar holdings application is starting to move into its joint review. So with or without this, we still need to do joint planning.
Okay, so you've got plenty of things to do.
We're doing lots of things.
This isn't holding anything up by saying going into next year.
It means that Tom Water, if this gets passed, Tom Water might want an ILA. Even if we've come to a certain point, they might want an ILA for the rest of it. But we're still moving forward. We already had a planning commission preliminary briefing. We have had an open house, and we are going to be engaging Tom Water and getting joint planning commission meetings scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so the, just, I'm sure it's true, but just to confirm, the planning directors, and this involved all, which planning directors are we talking about? Is it just Olympian Tom Water or Lacy's there?
Yeah, Tom Water, Lacy, and Yelm.
Okay, Yelm. And they're all comfortable with what we've got here as our proposal?
And TRPC was there as well.
Okay, other questions? No. So then, the next step for the board is just to say we're good to set a public hearing on this in January?
Yes, and then direction on which language do you want to move forward? Do you want it to be the planning director refined language? Or do you want it to be the UGM subcommittee recommendation?
Remember, the board told us to go back and finish that green box with the planning directors. The planning directors refined the language that was presented at the UGM. So do you want the initial language that was presented at the UGM during that vote? Or the refined language that the board directed us to engage in?
Which, again, is on the last two pages of the packet. There's either the second to last page, the shorter section on the top of that page is what's coming from the UGM subcommittee. And then the longer version, which starts in the bottom half to the back page, is from the planning directors, which is what you've been.
Yeah, for me, I would like to move the revision. I mean, if we followed the process, this is what we would have seen to begin with. And to have everyone on board, I think, makes a lot of sense. And if we don't do that, we're really risking trouble, I think, down the road, so.
We don't have to set a date particular in January. We can just say set a date in January.
We'll return during, with an AIS during a normal agenda setting. And we'll work with Amy to make sure.
So I'm proposing to move the revised language forward. Is that? Commissioner Fornier? Go ahead. Are you okay to move the revisions forward versus the original?
I mean, I can go with that, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing on this new language.
Okay, that sounds great.
Public rises up and speaks to things that we hadn't thought about. You can always adopt the original.
And on that note, we have been sending out regular notices and updates to everyone who's interested in this topic and are collecting comments on that. So even ahead of the public hearing, and for anyone who's listening, please feel free to provide comments.
Good work. You've been just moving forward. You've been paying attention. This sets the stage. It's a precedent, right? This is a new tool, so doing it right for our community is gonna be really important. And I think having that step back with the planning directors has been very helpful. So thank you for the direction, board.
Thank you, and I apologize for my awkward, I'm trying to rescue my earring.
So passionate. Thanks, Sarah.
Hopefully, that'll be the picture that shows up at some point. Thank you.
Next up is Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds Update. And I saw Shaylin, I saw the pro, hey, come on up.
Good morning. Dr. Jen Freihai, interim director, Public Health and Social Services. And this is just a relatively quick CJTA Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funding Update. There is no ask today, and I'll turn it over to our senior program manager of both treatment sales tax and CJTA, Shaylin Torres.
Standing Board, thanks for having us this morning. So as Jen mentioned, we're just gonna be providing an informational overview of criminal justice treatment account funding. We should have some supplemental documents with a CJTA overview. I also included our contract with the Healthcare Authority for criminal justice treatment account funds, as well as our CJTA local plan. So I'll just go over those documents. Next slide. So as some brief background, the Washington State Healthcare Authority allocates criminal justice treatment account funding, or CJTA, funding to counties, behavioral health organizations, administrative, and also administrative service organizations. And Thurston County receives about $370,000 each state fiscal year. Per RCW, these funds may be used to provide substance use disorder and recovery support services. And so this includes substance use disorder treatment, recovery support services, assessments, case management for recovery support services. These are services that aren't directly substance use disorder treatment, but they are supporting those that are undergoing treatment. So this could include things like housing support, rental assistance, urinalysis testing, and peer support. And people who have been diagnosed with a substance use disorder and have charges filed by a county prosecutor are eligible to have their substance use disorder treatment or recovery support services paid for by CJTA. For RCW, a panel of county law and justice partners are tasked to jointly submit a plan to the county commissioners on how CJTA is gonna be spent. And this panel includes representatives from Thurston County Superior Court, Drug Court, Public Defense, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, and a local substance use disorder provider, which right now is Northwest Resources. And this panel meets about three to four times each year to review expenditures and make recommendations on the use of unspent funds, if there are any, and also help develop the CJTA local plan when we have a new contract. And while not required by state law, representatives from Thurston County Pretrial Services and District Court are invited to panel meetings, because often there is coordination of services there. So there are not official voting members on the panel, but they're still invited to form the panel. And for the CJTA local plan, this is made for every new contract we have with the Healthcare Authority. It's actually part of our devils to them. So this is the plan that gets presented to the commissioners before we execute any of our subrecipient contracts. And the plan for our 2023 through 2025 contract outlines nine different uses of the funds. And I'm not gonna go through all nine of those, but just an overview of some main ones. Substance use disorder assessments, treatment services for therapeutic court participants, parenting classes, housing case management, and rental assistance, which are all considered recovery support. And then something unique to this funding source is it also pays for domestic violence evaluation and treatment. Realize this table is a little bit small, so it is in your summary. This table shows the 2023 through 2024 state fiscal year budget and spending. This also includes funded recipients and also the funded services. Overall, 88% of CJTA funding that was budgeted in the first contract year was spent, and this left $43,000 remaining. If spending levels follow the same trends, we're projecting about $80,000 to $90,000 in overall underspending over the two contract years. And in our two contracts, two-year contracts with the Healthcare Authority, they allow us to roll unspent funds from the first year into the second year to spend it. And so the local CJTA panel, they met in May of 2024 to come up with recommendations on how to address this underspending. And so these two recommendations were, first one, add $35,000 to the DUI and Drug Court agreement. So DUI and Drug Court has reported a 40% increase in the cost of urinalysis and treatment provider services, or often referred to as toxicology services. So the panel supported this increase to their budget for their new treatment services contract, and this was approved by the board back in July. And the second recommendation was to add $40,000 to the ASO housing agreement. And so historically, this program has demonstrated an ability to spend down their funds, so over 95% actually. And also, they've utilized unspent CJTA from previous contracts to increase rental assistance funds. So we've noticed it's been pretty flexible. And then this amendment was approved by the board in September.
Can you stop here real quick? So on the last slide, it says there was $43,000 remaining because of 88% spent. But then this slide, you've got $75,000. Next slide.
That's for the, just for the cost of the amendments. So there is, so the $43,000 is the amount that was unspent from the first contract year, but the amendments themselves were the $75,000.
So the $43,000, maybe another way of saying it, was able to be rolled over from one contract year to the second contract year, independent of what the contract amendments were. Not a one-for-one correlation between the two numbers.
This last slide shows the CJTA budget for the second contract year after the cost of the amendments that we just talked about, and they're denoted in blue. So overall, we have more than our $370,000 budget to spend down due to the amended increases to the ASO and Superior Court budgets that will help spend down our CJTA. And in summary, we came out underspent in the state, the last state fiscal year, and the board approved the two amendments that will enable us to reduce underspending by June of 2025. And the local CJTA panel will continue to monitor expenses and, if needed, make recommendations to the board on further reducing underspending. And I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
And thank you for this. I know I've been kind of asking about these funds. My first question is, in seeing who the subrecipients are, I'm wondering about outside organizations and how they get chosen for these funds.
Yeah. So it's usually based upon, we go through a budget exercise before we enter into, when we get our new contract with the Healthcare Authority, we go into a budget exercise, and they talk about gaps that they're seeing in services, and a lot of the times, it's housing. And also looking into innovative ways to address those that are impacted by the justice system and also trying to enhance their recovery. And so usually after those conversations, there's been a couple of external organizations that have come up. And so the external organizations on your list, that would be Dispute Resolution Center, and they do restorative justice facilitated dialogues, and that's something that's a bit new. And we've talked about those a little bit. I could provide some more information if you needed on those. And then for Family Education and Support Services, they provide parenting classes. And so there's, I think that the panel would be open to considering other external organizations as well.
So my next question is, how much do we underspend? So I know this goes through a biennium, right? So as you're tracking, right now, what we did is kind of those underspent funds, we switched them over to organizations who might be able to spend it. But previously, have we sent back funds?
Previously, I believe that we have, but I would need to double-check, since this is my first time with this contract.
Thank you. And then I would appreciate if that information does get sent out. My next question is in terms of the subrecipient and services that are being provided and those that are currently, I'll be honest, I'm thinking about the SCRAM project, right? Especially as we're talking about underspent funds. And it is, right now, a program that we're going through ARPA that's quite a bit. And I'm wondering, does a program like that qualify? Can a program like that be considered through, with these funds? And possibly appreciate a conversation with the panel next year of like, is that a program that would fit within the goals that they have laid out?
Happy to follow up on that.
Excuse me, Commissioner, for which funding stream?
For the CJTA funds, whether SCRAM would be ineligible.
Thank you.
So we will follow up on that.
You don't ask us to do anything?
Nope.
Okay, other questions for Shaylin?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for really putting together something that makes sense.
You're most welcome.
If you look this over, you pretty much figure out what's going on. So, thank you, and to the panel.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Budget Resolution Review.
Good morning. So before you, commissioners, is a rolled-up or a condensed version of the resolutions and ordinances that will need to be adopted on December 17th. Just giving you a little bit of a heads up, because there are two new commissioners this year, so they know the number of resolutions that'll be coming.
They had to do it last year, right? I felt you don't remember.
Just, I think you were present, correct?
Yeah.
So it's just for information at this point.
Okay, so we have a long list of resolutions. You're looking for questions about what they are, or?
If you'd like to ask questions, we are happy to answer those questions. However, please keep in mind that the resolutions still need to be drafted, so that's in progress, and they need to be reviewed by legal. So the answers would be very limited at this time.
Okay. So all the decision-making that's, will go into this, is yet to be done. In respect to salaries for elected officials, the property tax 1% piece, the...
Property tax 1%, where's... Property tax one percent, we're assuming.
We're assuming, but we haven't.
Already been made. You've not taken the action yet.
Because there's a public hearing.
That's right.
And we can't, we have to hear what people say.
No final decisions.
And that's changed votes in the past.
Yep, it has.
Any questions from the board on the list of resolutions?
More to come.
More to come, yeah.
Be prepped.
Yeah, we generally review this list in detail at your final decision meeting in December.
Is this connected to the hearing schedule as well?
Yes, it is.
So this is just
Wanted to let you know, though, when you look at this, commissioners may recall that we usually have two days of public hearing. We've condensed that down to one day and no evening meetings. So we used to have a public hearing and then a lot of time sitting around waiting for the next one to start. So we've condensed this down.
And there's no, there's no set, like, formula for how we manage public comment. Because I know we've done it a couple of different ways in the time I've been on the board.
Right. The only requirement according to state law is that you must provide an opportunity for the public to ask questions and get answers at the public hearing on the budgets. So we have done that a few ways. The way we're contemplating for this year is the way we did it last year. That for each of these, just going to call them segments, the presenter, who will most likely be Summer, will go through the list of offices and departments in that segment. And then at the end, you'll provide an opportunity for the public to make comment and ask questions of this particular set of offices and departments.
So
Rather than stopping after each one.
So at the, if we look at the first chunk, all of those elected officials will give.
Yep.
You said Summer, but they
Each one does not present their own.
But they do answer the question. They're there to answer questions.
They've been notified that they need to be here. Has this calendar been sent out to the offices and departments?
I believe it was sent yesterday, but I will verify that.
And then say there's five people to give public comment, and they, they ask questions of three or four different officials. Then we go through all the public commenters, and then the officials can one by one answer the questions, or? So it's not after each commenter, or is it?
Well, so we're, we're not going to like present the clerk and then ask for comments on the clerk.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Do them all and ask for
But let's say there's ten people that want to give public comment. First person gives public comment, then the officials respond before the next person gives public comment.
Person as they stand up, but we still limit the comment time to four minutes to manage the time.
Do you want to do it after every public commenter? I feel like it would be more streamlined to let everyone comment. And then if an elected official wants to respond.
If there are a lot of
I know there's usually
Yeah, I mean, usually we don't have very many, and it works just fine that way. But if we get a lot, then it becomes problematic. So I think that, you know, we'll
It's a midterm with almost no changes, so presumably there won't be a huge amount of comment, but you never
True.
Okay, so anything else need to address with regard to item five? Nope. Right? Then item six is public safety sales tax maintenance of effort.
So I think you're waiting for the sheriff.
Did they give you the table, or can they sit from the other?
Sheriff is
Sheriff's not here at this moment.
Good morning, nice to see you.
He's on his way, so.
So last week, we
Commissioner Fournier, did you have something to say? I think he just might have gone off mute. Go for it, Summer.
Thank you. Last week, we met with the sheriff, Heidi, the auditor, and county manager and budget staff to present the options available to the sheriff for the maintenance of effort. The sheriff decided to go with one fund. So with the option of taking the general fund funded amount from 2023 and transferring that into public safety sales tax for maximum flexibility in the utilization of that money. And also, they have determined internally with the help of budget staff that they will keep records for transparency and for future reference on how the funding is used. So that in the spirit of the public safety sales tax passage, that we are maintaining the appropriate cost separation internally. And I believe that captures all of it. If you have any questions.
Does that represent the sheriff's position?
Yeah.
Now you get to do it again, Summer.
Perfect. Good morning.
I'm early.
Thank you for joining us. So I was just sharing with the group here that last week we met with yourself and Heidi and the auditors team, the budget team, the county manager, to discuss the options as presented to you. And that you chose to go with the one funding option to transfer the general fund amount at 2023 levels into public safety sales tax for maximum flexibility, and that internally, that budget staff will help your finance team set up the appropriate coding so that you can report to the public as needed for full transparency of the usage of those funds. Is that correct?
Yeah. Basically, with, with either funding model, it didn't really matter. The, the point still remains that the public safety tax is not enough money to support existing staff. So regardless of how we slice and dice this, as long as the expectation is there that the general fund requests are not going to end in the future when, you know, general fund expenditures continue to go up. And we talked about like that two percent escalator and things like that. Then to us, it's, we're kind of, we're kind of at the point where it doesn't really matter how the funds are split up. We'll continue to track our new staff separately when it comes to coding. That way, we can report back to the public to say, hey, listen, you guys approved a tax in 2023. Here's what it bought you. It bought you twenty-seven deputies. It bought you a building, so you no longer have leased space, those kinds of things. But those are things we can track internally, so.
Commissioner Edwards?
This meets all the legal requirements of the state auditor doing a review and all that.
I believe it does.
When you say you believe it does.
Questions have been asked from the state auditor, and their response has been that we need to work with our attorneys, which we have done.
And so do we have an opinion that matches what the state auditor is asking? I'm just trying to stay ahead of a finding later on that we did something wrong. That's
We are too, Commissioner.
So do we have that?
We have the responses from the state auditor.
But we don't have, we don't have anything in writing from our legal counsel?
We have the opinion that internally, as long as we are using the funds appropriately, that there's nothing wrong with transferring the
My concern is, being as there's a question, why not get it definite in writing? And so two or three years from now, we don't have to say, well, they, they said it's probably okay. I don't know, I'm kind of looking at our auditor over here to, to see if we get anything in writing from anybody to make sure that we're making as a board a good, sound legal decision. I'm not questioning it. I think it's great. I want to go along with it, but I don't want the county to be faced with a finding at a later date because we didn't cover something. So I'm probably talking about the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about, but
Well, we, I mean, we've, we've gone through it with prosecuting attorney.
And they don't want to give
Our ability to, to direct a legal opinion, a written legal opinion, I think is, you know
I'd like to have it be on the record that the Thurston County prosecuting attorney is refusing to give us a written opinion.
So let's take a, let's take a beat, and I think that we can draft up the process as Summer has related this morning. And then take an opportunity to have that reviewed again by the legal counsel, which has already reviewed the process that Summer's stating, and see what we can do about confirmation that you're requesting. But I think that we have a good path forward and appreciate the collaboration with the sheriff. Does that sound good, Commissioner?
It sounds good to me. I see the chairs shaking as hell.
No, that sounds good. I'm just, and I'm also just, if we had an auditor's representative sitting in that chair. We do.
Brandon.
Brandon is here.
Can we bring you up, Brandon?
Sure.
This has been too difficult of a question to leave us, don't it? Have you heard the whole discussion, or did you walk in?
Yeah, I, I heard the whole discussion of, and Brandon Weber, internal auditor, I work out of the auditor's office.
So what's your comfort level with the proposal that we
Well, the, as far as the, the SAO, and they're really hesitant to weigh in on really complex legal issues. This, in some ways, maybe is complex, in some ways is, is simple, depending on how much you squint at it. So we've, we've reviewed it with them. They, they say, you know, document your methodology, your rationale. And we've done that really well. I think we vetted, vetted the issue across the county. You know, one of the challenges is that we look at the same piece of paper and the same words, and people bring sort of their own background to it and sometimes, you know, have different, different conclusions to it. But, but ultimately, I, I don't think that there's going to be any concern with the maintenance of effort methodology. A lot of federal grants are written that way. And that as long as you are not reducing your appropriation in response to the new funding, that, that generally we're, we're okay. So I, I don't have any major, major concerns about how we've, how we've approached it. Again, I think that at the end of the day, and what the sheriff's really indicated is, is demonstrating to the public what we're doing with these, with these dollars and as our costs go up to make sure that we're continuing to, you know, meet our commitment to the voters.
This methodology adds quite a bit of transparency, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Edwards?
No. Sounds like we're headed in the right direction. That's all I'm concerned about.
Thanks, Steve.
I just want to, I saw Diana walk in. If you wanted to give comments, I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Oh, here, here comes the auditor too.
Might have some more comments. Would that be okay, Sheriff?
Come on up, Mary.
Sorry, I was running down the stairs when you started. Give me a thirty-second briefing.
Yeah. There was a
We'll just have Summer go for the third time.
Okay.
Yes. So last week, we met with yourself, the auditor, auditor team, budget staff, the county manager, and the sheriff, and the sheriff's team to review the maintenance of effort options. And the sheriff decided that he would like to choose the option of having the general fund amount from 2023, the funded amount transferred into public safety sales tax. And that internally, budget staff would work with Heidi and the finance staff and the sheriff's office to set up the coding appropriately so that we could maintain the usage of those funds moving forward. So that if the sheriff is, is reporting out what is spent from the original public safety sales tax funding and the general fund funding, that all of that information is maintained and separated appropriately in our internal records.
Okay. So you want the auditor's kind of overview and opinion? Yeah, that was a nice half hour meeting. It seems like we never have enough time to really go into the detail. And it was pretty clear by the, by Leonard, the county manager, that it was up to the sheriff. End of story. It was up to the sheriff. So, you know, I'm a little disappointed because per statute, the auditor is the ex officio state auditor for the county. And while I think it is allowable, I think there are two things that we really need to consider. And one is, number one, it's going to be very difficult to sort these out from a financial report standpoint. I mean, we still have to report them separately. I also want to make note that every single other sales tax that we have is in a separate fund. So this will be the first time that we intermingle funds, and I, I don't recommend it. Heidi is fantastic, and I think she will be able to do a great job. She's been with the county a long time. Heidi is also nearing retirement age, and I am a little concerned that what would happen if she leaves the county, which everybody is going to leave the county at some point in time and retire. I think from a public perception standpoint and transparency, which we discussed a lot. I mean, we have trust issues with the voters in the county, and I don't think this is going to help that at all. While we may be able to put financial staff to work to provide a report, to sort that out, that's going to be a lot of extra effort for financial folks, not just in the sheriff's office, but in financial services as well. And it's going to be very, very difficult for the public to understand what is being spent where. And just mingling these funds gives the perception of supplanting. So I think that's an important consideration because it was a promise to the voters. It was in the resolution that we would not supplant, and there's really going to be a lot of difficulty showing that. And I want to turn it over to Diana just for a little more detailed, high-level overview into the details.
Well, it will be very quick. I appreciate the work that the commissioner's staff did, and I actually agree with their quadrants. I just want to make sure that the commissioners who make these decisions and the elected officials that have to report to constituents understand that we prefer clean, transparent accounting. And the number one thing of two accounts is it's really easy to see. It's really easy to demonstrate what we did with the new money if the new money is separate. While we understand that the operational flexibility that the sheriff wants, and I do understand that not having to come to the board and keeping those funds in a separate place is going to potentially cause the disadvantage of a perception of supplanting, which means people are going to ask the question, and we're going to need to answer the question. So what we saw in emails last week was Heidi, which I completely trust, has said she is going to separate these, and it's five pages back and front of what's coming from the general fund into this public safety sales tax. And when we get those questions, which we know are coming, we're going to need to take these separate accounts and split those apart. So I will say we want to make sure that whatever the board decides, we're going to do the best we can. But at least the opinion of the auditor's office is keeping it clean and separate is going to keep us, which takes more work and attention to detail. I agree with that also. But attention to detail is what's going to need to be needed for the transparency and clean expenditure tracking. And that is the auditor's recommendation.
And we will need to split them out for our financial reporting to the state auditor anyway. So, you know, that's going to be a lot of labor from my staff. So we're pretty strapped. So we're pretty strapped as it is, but.
I I will say that this, this has been difficult. When you say we've talked a long time, I felt like the fifteen minutes wasn't enough discussion, that everyone's trying their best to get this information communicated. But it was made very clear that it was the sheriff's decision. And I hope that we're able to answer the questions from the financial reporting standpoint and from a public records standpoint, and we'll be able to have the trust of the voters that when we go before them, that we will be able to show that this is good use of funds.
Commissioner Claus.
So I appreciate you, Auditor Hall and your staff for coming down here during this conversation. And I'm hearing from the sheriff, and let me know if I'm mishearing or misunderstanding that you say kind of the funds, it's, it's all the same really, whether we combine them or not. And I'm wondering, how significant is the operational flexibility to you? Because those are not words I've heard out of your mouth. So I want to know directly from you, like, if it's, your decision is what we're hearing from the county manager, and we have an auditor's opinion saying, you know, this is, this could be messy, it could create more work, every other sales tax has its own fund. Does that affect how you feel about it at all, or do you feel strongly about combining them?
Honestly, at this point, like, I just feel like we're, we we got to the point where we're just spinning our wheels, because ultimately, I am not the legislative authority in this county. That's the commissioners. That's the commissioners and the budget team to figure out how to spend money, where the accounts go, all those types of things. The auditor's job is to make sure that it's all done correctly, obviously. My big thing is that the twenty six million dollars that I have for the general fund right now is not enough to keep the sheriff's office running. Last year, we put in a budget request of three hundred thousand dollars for overtime because I'm allotted about, I think, I'm roughly speaking, about twenty six thousand dollars in overtime per month. We're routinely spending about a hundred thousand dollars to keep this, this operation running. That's, that's just to keep seven deputies on the road twenty four hours a day and pay them the overtime that is required by federal law to keep the operation running. The pro, the concern that I have is that once we, regardless of how we go about this, is that I still need general fund dollars to help offset this. So we put in a general fund request last year for three hundred thousand dollars in budget authority on overtime. That was approved through the public safety tax. So that's how we're staying afloat this year. We are overspent in the general fund. We trained our deputies. The year before, we had to slash all the training. Not doing that again. I, I can't send tired and untrained deputies out into the field. It's a disaster waiting to happen. So we're kind of already there, I guess, is my point, is that we're, we're spending public safety tax dollars on general fund operations because until Septem, September, October of this year, we didn't have a public safety tax deputy working the road. So the overtime that we're paying to keep our normal operations running is being paid out of the public safety tax, which is supposed to be for new staff, new infrastructure, those kinds of things. So I guess my point is, is that we're, we're already here. The, the conversation's already being had about commingling funds and, and using joint efforts to, to make the operation work, because otherwise, I would be three hundred thousand dollars in the hole right now, and I would be asking for you guys to bail me out with general fund dollars from somewhere. And I guess from my position, I'm just stuck in a really challenging spot of, I would rather personally have some sort of audit finding at the county level than owe three hundred thousand dollars out of my paycheck personally, because I'm the elected official who can't manage their budget. But the problem is, I don't physically have the dollars to keep it running. The only alternative is to lower staffing levels to a point where we lower overtime and don't respond to certain calls. That's, so I'm just, I think we're all kind of stuck in a spot right now of like, we've already crossed this bridge, and how are we going to move forward with it?
Commissioner Fornier?
So I, I see this on the, on the agenda, just as a discussion point with no, there's no specific decision being made right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, okay. So, thank you.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. Just from what I'm hearing over here, I believe that, I guess, I would direct for the county manager and the auditor's team as well as the sheriff's team kind of sit back down, right? And try to work out through the details. I'm not sure, you know, if the sheriff wants to proceed this way, maybe then it's just the auditors and, and our budget team working out through, through these details. So I, I guess, just at this time, that's kind of where I'm leaning, just to give that direction to the county manager for more discussions to happen.
I guess I just want to clarify with my seatmate. So we're recognizing the sheriff has needs to run his operation. And it sounds like we're covering it right now. I don't know if it's being covered correctly. I just want to do it right. And I think that I've even, I think I've seen a statute, I can't quote it, that does say something about the county auditor is the ex officio state auditor. And to me, that means something. It's in there for a reason. And I want the auditor in the middle of this. I, I want, I want to accept the auditor's position, but I want to take care of the sheriff's needs. So I, I guess I kind of agree with my seatmate that I don't see that the sheriff needs to be there in the middle of this. You, you don't need to referee it, I don't think. But I think we need to figure something out, and it bugs me that we can't get recommendations that make sense and follow the law. I'm trying to figure out the why here. And I don't understand the legal not being willing to jump in, but, okay, that's, go ahead, Mary, I'm sorry.
We have a couple of items on the table. Oh, sorry, was there a question? Sorry.
I was just gonna, um, thank you. I agree that we should probably have more discussion about this. Meetings need to be more than thirty minutes. Whoever his assistant is, that just does not give us enough time. I mean, we need a couple hours to really hash through the details and come to, you know, something that works for everybody. And, you know, I don't have the idea in my head right now, but, you know, if we got, can we get creative and stay within the law and put some other type of something out there where the general fund would go into a suspense fund? I don't know. I'd need to talk with my financial staff. But I don't know, I don't believe that there are just two ways to do this. And I think, you know, let's kind of think in the, think in a circle, and are there other options that would accomplish both things?
Commissioner Fornier? And then I'll go to Diana, and then I have a comment. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess I was just thinking that there's, there is no ideal situation, and I, I, I'm, you know, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Mejia that it sounds like you need, the, the, the work group needs to get back together and, and find some type of compromise that, you know, that can be presented to us. And, and, and then, you know, the, like, the, the, you know, the recommendation should be coming to us, I, I guess, without, with, without a tremendous amount of disagreement. See, you know, like, I, I don't, you know, I, I'm hearing different words that, you know, well, it's, you know, the, the, the concept is not ideal, the concept is, it, it will work, but we don't like it, you know, like, so I, I'm not, I'm not going to hold out for something that's perfect and ideal, but we all have to come to an agreement, we all have to make compromises.
Diana?
So I do think there are some options we can talk through, and I could give an example if I don't know because it hasn't been fully baked. But for instance, our election stabilization fund, we do the opposite. We have a restricted fund, and we transfer money from that restricted fund to the general fund when the general fund needs more money. And so that.
Can I jump back? If, if this isn't fully baked, can we take it back offline and bake it more before it comes back up?
Talk through those types of options, that you need funds. I agree that we want you to be able to have the most flexibility with the funds, and we want it to be as clean as possible. And I don't feel that fifteen or thirty minutes was enough discussion that we needed. And at least what you have presented, we agree these two quadrants are what are the auditor's recommendation, so we'll continue to talk through that.
Okay, so.
Sue, I would just like to clarify that, that county manager and the budget team have made it abundantly clear that it doesn't matter to us, that we are not pushing one position or the other. We will make whichever one.
Okay, I, I guess I agree with pretty much what I've heard from my seatmates. I'm nervous. I would also like to see a compromise that everyone is comfortable with, because what I'm hearing is, you know, if we don't get closer to that, then if this decision's going to be on our lap, I was hoping not to have to go into the deepest of deep weeds, but you guys are pulling me there, and I, and I will go there. If this, if we can't get closer to agreement, then I will dive, dive in, and I will need to be at all these meetings, and I will need to hear from every party exactly what is the, you know, Commissioner Claus's question was right on point, like, exactly my question, like, how, how much does this matter to you? How much, how much risk are we taking? How much work is this going to be on budget? You know, like, I don't know. I was hoping, I was hoping our experts could figure this out for us, but if you put this on my back, then I'm going to have to figure it out, and I'm going to have to know that I'm right when, the vote that I take. And I don't, I have no idea right now, because I don't do the jobs that you all do. So I would agree with Commissioner Mejia, let's take one more chance, shot at trying to figure this out. Otherwise, and, and I'm getting nervous because I know the time is, is not today's time, I mean, the timeline on this, on this, having this decision be decided is, is ticking. And I may have a lot of education of myself to do between now and then.
Input is received.
Thank you. I saw a lot of hands. Who wants to go first, Sheriff Sanders?
Well, I, this was kind of thrown on my lap. I didn't realize when I walked into the meeting that it was going to be, hey, this is your choice, make a decision on it, right? Like, because I'm not an auditor, and I'm not, I'm not a budget person. But where I get cold feet with all of this, I think, in a perfect world, I would prefer two funds. Like, I agree with the auditor. That makes it really clean and easy. Where I get cold feet is that the voters approved this tax for all the new stuff, but we are already paying for old stuff with the new stuff. So because of that, we're already in this, like, thirty day time, we're, we're crunching down now of like, are we already supplanting? Because that three hundred thousand dollars that's been authorized in public safety tax money, I'm spending that. That's, that's the overtime that it costs to run the agency this year and actually train our staff and, and meet the demands. So if that goes away, I need three hundred thousand general fund dollars, or I'm overspent. And so that's where I'm in a, in a pickle of like, we made this direction, we moved down this direction, I made operational decisions based on that funding, but now we're sitting in a position of, if those are two separate funds, and I'm not touching any of that for old stuff, I've got a big bill for old stuff. And that bill going forward isn't going to go away. That's my point. The overtime is never going to get cheaper than it was this year. The wages are never going to be lower than they were this year. And the training that the state is sending down that's un, that's mandated and unfunded is not getting any less. We have more unfunded training mandates. So I guess my whole thing is, ideally, yeah, let's separate the accounts, but the general fund requests are going to start flying in to make sure that I'm whole on the general fund side to support that initial batch of employees. And then on the public safety side, well, we have excess money over here now for the other stuff. But that's, that's my big thing, is like, I know that I'm resp, I'm personally liable for every dollar overspent in my budget, and Heidi does a really good job of, of covering me and making sure that I am underspent, and we revert something back every year. But I'm, I'm really nervous about the fact that we've already started down this path, and I've made these decisions throughout the year based on the direction that I received.
So do we have concurrence to have a continued discussion with the team? I see that. Commissioner Claus?
I give a thumbs up to that, and I also had a question about kind of what the sheriff is talking about now. That's what I highlighted and wrote down is, do, does everyone understand, like, the process that's currently happening? And it sounds like, no, I know I don't understand. And I want to just make sure, in the interim, while we're still continuing these conversations, that we're not doing something wrong, or, you know, just having a, a plan in place for now. I mean, are we just going to continue doing it the way we're doing it and then hope for the best? Or should we, I don't know, should we address that today, or how should we do that? Because it sounds like we might run into a problem down the road, and I'm not hearing an answer on how that's going to be reconciled.
I think the, the direction that the board has provided to reconvene the parties to sit down and kind of work through those, and we can actually do some brainstorming as well. It's sort of the, the myriad of, of questions that need to be answered so that we can bring back a, a full recommendation to the board for consideration. And I'm hearing that that's sooner as opposed to later.
I just want to say, I mean, we're just coming out of a presidential election that was a, a huge effort, so we do have more time to, to dedicate to this. And I just want to make a comment about audit findings. We've had several over the last few years, and eventually, our bond rating is going to go down. And I think.
We just got one, and it stayed the same.
Well, I know, but eventually.
We lucked out this time.
Yes, we did.
And I will say that I think talking through these things is what we need to do next, because I can see, for instance, the internal auditor is independent and makes recommendations, and he believes that we can work through this process, but he is independent and not doing the tracking work, which is work and attention to detail, that is true. And I think that, and this may be incorrect assumption, but for instance, overtime, the expectation is, or I would think a reasonable person would think, you have more overtime when you have less deputies. When you have more deputies, are they working less overtime? And so do we have some things that we can use if it is challenged? And so talking through those types of things, and to make sure that we're prepared for this year and every year thereafter, that it stays clean and tractable, trackable, and that we are not supplanting, which is what we told the voters. And what you had as a 2023 budget, which is your baseline, that we want to make sure that we don't have inadvertent supplanting, are we expecting that the sheriff's budget is going to go down less than that 2023 number in something that we cannot support? And so those are the types of conversations that we need more than the fifteen to thirty minutes to talk through.
Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, I, when, when a recommendation does, does come back, I, I, I get, like, I get, I don't know, suspicious is not the word, but when I hear the words, the perception and assumption, and like, I, I prefer, like, objective, you know, words, words that, like, make me think it's an obje, objective analysis and not a subjective analysis? So like, when, when a recommendation comes forth, like, the perceptions of, you know, or assumptions of things being done in a way that is not in line with other subjective thoughts, to me, aren't as powerful as just, can you do it? Is it legal? Can it be done? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you. So I think we're wrapping up this item.
I guess, just to, I want to reassure the sheriff that I don't think we're interested in putting him in a pickle. And we, as the county legislative body, we're faced with ongoing litigation. We, we might have to pay out. And if we have to do that, or if we have to pay back three hundred thousand dollars, we could do that. We've got a rainy day fund. We could do it if we had to do it. I certainly don't want the sheriff on the hook. He's trying to play ball with the community and make the community safer. And I think it behooves us to assure him that we're going to cover this. Just because we didn't get it figured out quite properly, that's not his fault. So I'd just like to make sure that we follow the auditor's advice. That's my initial goal, but I want to hear the rest of this. And we've got other things punting, and we've got a rainy day fund. We could draw from if we had to as a last resort, so.
Just to cap this off, we have not billed any of that, any of those overtime hours to the public safety tax, to my knowledge, yet. So Chief Thompson has been holding off for that reason of like, she's going to spend the general fund dollars because that's what makes sense, and then we'll wait. But the projected variance for the general fund is negative. So the plan was to pay the bill off with our budget authority. So that's, that's how we move forward with that. But happy to be, and continue to work on this.
More to come, sounds like.
Okay, thank you. Ten thirty, we'll take ten minutes, and then we will reconvene with item seven, which is the closed session on sheriff's contract issue.
Am I in that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Is there a?
Okay, we are back. Oh, I'm on mute. Okay, it's ten forty-two AM, we're back in our November thirteen twenty twenty-four work session. We're picking up with item seven. This is a closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one forty-four A. Collective bargaining sessions with employee organizations, including contract negotiations, grievance meetings and discussions relating to interpretation or application of a labor agreement or that portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations or grievance or mediation proceedings or reviewing proposals made in negotiations or proceedings while in progress. The deputy sheriff's contract is the specific topic. We're gonna have twenty minutes. Board action may follow. It is ten forty-three, we will be in closed session until eleven oh-three. And the livestream will stop at this juncture, we'll be back at eleven oh-three, potentially to extend or potentially to take up the rest of the agenda. Okay, it's eleven oh-three AM, we are back in session. Coming out of the closed session, that was item seven of this morning's agenda. Item eight is commissioner items. It's the last item on the agenda. Does anyone have an item to discuss this morning? I'll throw one out just for something to think about. I don't really wanna get too deep into it because county manager's not here, but we're planning for the legislative breakfast that we've had in the past. We didn't have it for a number of years because of COVID, we had it last year. So I would just like commissioners to just think about how to, we would like to, because I've been asked and I don't really have a perfect answer of how to present the items. I mean, how do we wanna do that? Do we want the county manager to present items? Do we want each commissioner to take an item? Do you want? I don't really wanna do it all, so commissioner Mihia, any thoughts?
So in the past, or, you know, it's been the chair who's the representative, but now that there's two commissioners allowed, I would think it would be the chair and the LSC representative who would be presenting at that meeting and kind of putting over the board's perspective since.
So that's Commissioner Fournier?
Yeah.
And I would talk to you?
Yeah, that's, that's just my recommendation since I know, you know, Commissioner Fournier is our LSC legislative representative and he's gonna be fighting for our proposals at the WASAC level as well, so.
Well, think about it. I mean, when I looked at the, when I looked at the list, it almost looked like there were ones where we could almost all, we could almost all kinda divvy them up because there were certain ones that all, the different ones of us were more involved in than, and less, but. But I don't know, I don't remember exactly how we did it way back in the distant past.
In the distant past, all commissioners attended, it was a notice meeting.
Yeah.
And there was a roundtable. And commissioners would talk about what they were particularly interested in and each elected official was given an opportunity to speak. So that was.
But even if you and Wayne.
Kinda how they went.
There was no.
Last year's was not well organized, I, I will say.
If, if you and Wayne were to do it, then we could chime in.
Yeah, okay.
To fill the void or whatever, you know, to detail it.
Okay.
I'll just throw out that I'm interested in participating, whatever it looks like.
I think we should all be here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it has to be just two of us.
I think it's better with everybody there.
And then, yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure that happens and then we can make a.
I'm game for whatever.
Okay.
Hey, I, I do have one question, but it's kinda, anything new on lands commissioner stuff? I mean, I mean.
There was a thing that we kicked, what was it about the, about Summit Lake strategy and whatnot?
Well, just the, the whole thing, I mean, you, you were, if the right person got in, you were gonna be able to have a relationship to, is that kinda percolating along?
I think so.
There was a Jolt article that came out earlier this week about, and it was about like ten different tracks being put up for auction that, that did include like carrot and cabbage patch. Did you, did you read that, Commissioner Minter?
Since to the meeting where they, where they did that, there was ten, ten, a motion was made to remove Thurston County's pieces and that failed four to two. And so, so all, well, the ten, I don't, there were originally sixteen or something. I don't know how it got to ten, but the ten that were like the controversial ones all got approved. So they're, they're going through the process whether the new lands commissioner can do anything about that because it's contrary to the policy that he wanted to pursue. That's up for him to decide, I don't know the legalities of all that. But it might affect some of the things we've discussed with respect to Summit Lake. So that's probably where we need to sort of touch base. I think we kinda kicked a decision point past the election date and now that we know the result of that, we can decide how we wanna proceed.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I'll touch base with county manager on that.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Any other commissioner items?
I had two.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
One, I, I would, I'd like to learn more about what Commissioner Edwards was bringing up earlier about the cost allocation of the executive offices. I, I'd love to learn more about that, I thought he brought up a, a good concept. And then I attended the transition policy board meeting this morning. I had to leave a little early, but they went over this massive transportation funding plan for the next couple of years. And it, you know, there, there was way more than I think can go over, but there was a, a lot of different projects that were put out that they're, that they're proposing. And then there was a lot of discussion about, you know, is the infrastructure money gonna be available? You know, kinda there, there was kind of a, like, like not a lot of, I, I don't know, it almost seemed like, well, gotta, gotta wait and see what the federal government looks like in the future.
Well, one other thing on DNR since you, you triggered a memory, so. Because the Climate Commitment Act twenty-one seventeen was failed and the Climate Commitment Act stays intact, that means the legislative proviso from last spring that said that up to two hundred and sixty acres of legacy forests in Thurston County can be identified for replacement with, and money was allocated to, to make those replacement purchases. I got a big email from people saying, you know, here's what we should do about that. But I don't know what the process is and I don't wanna try to guess. My, obviously my attempts to guess at what DNR wants us to do are not, we, we don't really think on the same thing. So I'm gonna, I would like to ask the county manager and Travis to reach out to DNR to say, okay, what do you, what do you need from us? Like, I don't know how much choice we get in the matter, I don't know, we get to make a recommendation, I don't know what form that recommendation would take. I have a lot of input from people on the ground that say that they've got ideas effort into something without knowing if it's what DNR actually wants or would use. So my suggestion is that we reach out to them and get their instructions as to what they would accept from us as input.
Do we want to wait until the new administration takes over?
Well, I'm being told that we need to put that in by December. So we.
Commissioner Minzer?
Yeah, go ahead, Wayne.
In the, i- in that Jolt article, it, it talked about a fir- couple of different, uh, counties where they were in like a similar situation where and, and forgive me if I, if I'm re- recalling it incorrectly, but there was sim- there was other similar counties in similar situations where the, the DNR had said, hey, give us a proposal uh, on what you want to do with your, uh, forest lands that we manage. And it said that some of the other counties had, had reached back out to them, but we, uh, kind of took a different approach. And we were looking to put together some kind of user group or stakeholders group. And do you know what those other counties uh, proposed back to the DNR that DNR is saying we didn't provide them with? Is there something, some other model there, something that we can look at that, that they did accept from other communities?
I think that's all summarized in Hillary Franz's letter to the board that came out about four days before our deadline for submission. I think it was a September twenty fifth letter.
Yeah. And I, I read, I read that, but like, I haven't seen anything speci- like if, if Kidittas County actually had some proposal as opposed to them saying something existed. You know what I'm saying?
I, I don't know about that. I think that there's, there's a couple of tools out there and for some counties, those tools actually fit. So they were able to save a piece, chunk here or chunk there because the tool fit. Those tools did not fit their Capitol State Forest for a whole bunch of reasons. And so we're being blamed for like not doing our homework or not, not being reasonable just because the very limited tools that they think that they have, and I disagree that that's all that they have, but the, 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 the a couple of tools that they think that they are limited to don't fit our goals or our, our state forest lands. And so there's just a disconnect there. Um, so.
Yeah, that's kind of the way that it read or they went, the way that their narrative was, but I mean, I'm, so it left me wondering, what is it? Is there something that somebody else did or proposed or a little piece of what they, you know, put forth that, that, you know, we could review or read or, but if it's apples and oranges, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know. This, this, this should be a, a, this should be a more direct conversation because the legislature said here's the money to replace and here's what gets replaced and Thurston County gets included. So this should be a more, you know, fruitful conversation with DNR because the legislature has set the rules, not when DNR sets the rules, we don't come to any agreement. When the legislature sets the rules, now we have a chance to actually work with them on identifying the parcels that we care about. So I want to make sure we don't miss that opportunity because someone's telling me December. I don't know where they're getting December because my initial thought was just Commissioner Mieha, like, let's talk to the new lands commissioner. I don't know, but I don't know the timelines and I don't know how fast they're going to act. I don't know what kind of input they want from the county. If we have to make those decisions, then, you know, like say I'm getting inundated with maps and just all kinds of stuff that we're going to have to work through. If we're going to pro- provide county input into what we think should be included in those two hundred and sixty acres. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get caught flat footed again.
It, because it's a budget proviso, it's going to be tied to the current biennial budget for the state. So I'm sure they would like to wrap it up.
It's a proviso in the current budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're running.
It was made contingent on the Climate Commitment Act not being repealed, so.
But it, they'll have a, it'll need to be transacted by June thirtieth of next year.
Of next year, yeah.
Okay. Well, if that's okay, I'll ask the county manager to, to sort of initiate a, a request to DNR for some instructions on how to manage our input into that proviso.
Are they required to have some type of a legislative report? That's not un- uncommon to say where they're at. Those are generally due the first is December. So I don't know.
Okay. Anything else this morning? Okay, word adjourned.